Gentlemen and welcome to this first meeting of the year 2020 of Wayne Westland Board of Education. Thank you for coming this evening. We're gonna begin our e- our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, led by Ms. Brooklyn Edison and Mr. Brady Bree of Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, Brady Bree, uh, he says, hello, my name is Brady Bree. And I'm the fifth grade student at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School in Wayne. My favorite subject in school is math and my teacher is Ms. Kirschman. Uh, I live in Canton with my Aunt Jen and Uncle Robert. I have two brothers, we have two pet cats. My favorite food is strawberry banana yogurt. And when I grow up, I would like to be a doctor. Brooklyn says, hello, my name is Brooklyn, is it Edison or Eitsen?
Eitsen.
And I am a fifth grade student at Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School in Wayne. I enjoy writing stories in school and my teacher is Ms. Bosch. I live in Canton with my mom, dad, brother and sister, we have two pet dogs. My favorite food is watermelon and tomatoes. When I grow up, I'd like to be a gymnastics teacher.
Brooklyn, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for being here tonight. I have for you this award. It says, Award of Recognition to Brooklyn Eitsen for Participation in the Flag Ceremony During a Regular Meeting of the Board of Education of the Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you very much. Brady, this award says, in recognition, presented to Brady Bree for Participation in the Flag Ceremony During a Regular Meeting of the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools. Thank you. Tell me, who'd you bring with you tonight?
I bring my mom, my, my brother and my sister.
Hello, Mom, and who else did you bring?
Mr. Hallman and Mrs. Hallman.
This your uncle? Hello, Uncle. Would you like to come up and take some photographs to remember this evening? And all the family members and Mr. Hallman are all invited to come up here and be part of the picture for the kids?
Oh, can I?
Come on, kids. Okay, someone sit here. Let's see when you're... Can we get everybody in? Does the picture take, we wanna get in the picture?
We didn't even say cheese.
Costs too much money to say cheese.
You got a trademark on that?
Thank you.
Can we give that back to that gentleman right there? Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Hallman. Next on our agenda this evening is the call of the role, Mr. Neal.
Ms. Heinz.
Present.
Myself, present. Mr. Buckeloo.
Present.
Mrs. Madell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
And President Cox.
And I'm present, thank you, Mr. Neal. Next item on the agenda, as is typical for the first meeting of the year, is the election of officers under 491.20. Under the dictates of the Wayne Westland Board of Education Board Operating Procedure 1.7.1, the Board of Education will now conduct the nomination and selection of officers to serve during the year 2020. Under these procedures, the Board shall elect a president, vice president, secretary and treasurer. The election of officers shall be by a majority of the full board. Officers shall serve for one year until their respective successors are elected and begin their terms. As Chief Election Officer of the District, Secretary Mark Neal will now call for nominations to each office in succession, beginning with the office of the President, then Vice President, Secretary and Treasurer. Nominations for each office will be called and voted on separately. Those nominated will be asked to confirm that they will serve if elected. The Secretary will call the vote for each person nominated in the order the nomination was received. Mr. Neal, please now call for the nominations to the office of President.
A word before I start, um, just as a reminder, and this is according to the rules, not our rules, but the Roberts Rules of Order, uh, a nominated candidate can decline. Uh, there is no second required for nominations, although there's not out of order to have a second, if you wish. After each nomination, um, I'll ask if there are any more nominations. If no one else nominating, then we'll move on. Uh, you are allowed, of course, to nominate yourself if you wish. After the close of nominations, then we'll do a roll call vote, as mentioned in the order in which the candidates were nominated. So if I could, let me get my paperwork ready. I'd like to open nominations for President.
Mr. Pr- Mr. Secretary, I name, I claim the attention of the Chair by nominating David Cox as President.
Dr. Weaver nominates David Cox.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I nominate, um, Ms. Madell as President?
Ms. Heinz nominates Mrs. Madell for President. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for President? Hearing no other nominations, I'll close nominations for President. We'll now vote in the order in which they were nominated. First for David Cox for President, starting with Mr. Buckeloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Heinz.
No.
And Mrs. Madell.
No.
I have four yea, four nay. Our rules call for, once we have a majority, that person is now the elected official. So, uh, David Cox is the President for this next year. I open nominations for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Fred Weaver.
President Cox nominates Fred Weaver, Dr. Weaver. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Heinz.
Mrs. Madell nominates Ms. Heinz. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we close nominations for Vice President. Voting first for, uh, Dr. Weaver for Vice President. I ask, uh, Mrs. Heinz.
No.
Ms. Heinz, I'm sorry.
No.
Forgive me. Mrs. Madell.
No.
Mr. Buckeloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
No.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's four votes in the affirmative, that is the majority. Dr. Weaver is the Vice President for 2020. Open nominations for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Mark Neal for Secretary.
President Cox nominates Mark Neal.
I'd like to nominate Shawna Walker.
I respectfully decline.
Okay. Let me at least enter that and then put, uh... Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
I nominate myself.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Vote on, uh, Neal, myself, uh, for Secretary, starting with Dr. Weaver.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We're voting for Secretary and you're first to vote. Uh, Mark Neal is the candidate for Secretary, voting for...
Yes.
Yes. I vote yes for myself, Ms. Heinz.
No.
Mrs. Madell.
No.
Mr. Buckeloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
No.
And Mr. Cox.
Yes.
That's four affirmative and the majority, uh, that ends up nominating, or electing myself as Secretary. Uh, nominations for Treasurer.
Mr. Secretary, I nominate Thomas Buckeloo.
Dr. Weaver nominates Mr. Buckeloo.
I nominate Ms. Madell.
Ms. Heinz nominates Mrs. Madell.
I ju- I don't think so. I respectfully decline, but I will nominate Mrs. Heinz.
Okay, and Mrs. Madell nominates Ms. Heinz. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing none, closed nominations. Voting first on the candidate, uh, Mr. Buckeloo. Uh, let's see, that would be, I'm trying to mix it up a little bit, um, Ms. Madell.
No.
Uh, President Cox.
Yes.
Mr. Buckeloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Ms. Heinz.
Yes.
Yes, you say?
Yes.
Okay, that's, uh, six in the affirmative, uh, that is the majority, and, uh, Mr. Buckeloo is our Treasurer. That ends nominations for the offices. And just to recap, President is David Cox, Vice President, Dr. Weaver, Mark Neal, Secretary, and Mr. Buckeloo is Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Neal, and congratulations to all the officers. Next item on our agenda is 492.20, Recognizations and Presentations. Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each January, Wayne Westland Community Schools, along with 529 other local and 56 intermediate school districts across the state, are proud to recognize its Board of Education in honor of School Board Recognition Month. Our school board spends countless hours of unpaid time working in conjunction with district's, uh, staff and administration to provide the best education for all of our students. School board members represent their fellow citizens' views and, uh, priorities as an elected official. They also reinforce the principle of local control over public education, which is an important, highly valued aspect of education in Michigan. Even though we make a special effort during the month of January to show our appreciation for our school board members, we recognize their contributions reflect a year-round effort on their part to improve student achievement and to fight what is, for what is best for all students. On behalf of myself, our staff, and most importantly, our students, I would like to thank each of you for your dedication to public education and present each of you with a small token of our gratitude put together by Chef Tony at the Career Tech Center and a certificate of appreciation.
Those two are mine.
Look at that. Oh, thank you. Wow. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In keeping with this evening's theme of appreciating our board members, I would like to recognize President Cox for the work he has done during the 2019 year in leading this board as its President and present him with this plaque to honor that work and his dedication.
You got a hammer?
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you. I got a hammer, so I can hammer in the morning. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, please don't show your age by saying things like that.
Just so you know, it's the same as yours, Dr. Weaver. Uh, what I'm going to do right now is, uh, this is a, this is a new year, we have new officers. What I'm gonna do is make a little bit of a change in seating. It would be, uh, more conducive for Ms. Simmons to have immediate access to her administrative people. And so, Ms. Simmons, I'm gonna ask you to trade places with Dr. Weaver. Dr. Weaver, will you come and sit here and allow, uh, Mrs. Simmons to have your chair? So she could be closer to her people. You can leave your, uh, cookies over there.
No. Even though I know she won't eat them.
I think I should let you have my cookies for some evening. Very nice, thank you, Mrs. Simmons. Next item on the agenda, Mrs. Simmons, is, uh, Part Two of 492.20.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, uh, Mr. Devin Kling is going to present Wayne Risa's Enhancement Village Presentation for the Board. This evening, this is just a presentation. We will be coming back to the Board at the February, uh, meeting to ask for a vote on the Enhancement Village, um, item.
Thank you, Mr. Kling.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, as Ms. Simmons said, um, this is a presentation, you guys will be voting on this, uh, next month. Uh, so this is just a presentation, uh, put together by, uh, Wayne Risa and ourselves on the Enhancement Village in Wayne County. So, let's see if this works, there we go. So what is the Regional Enhancement Village? So, since 1994, Prop A, uh, the state funding kind of all switched. And it went to a more, uh, per pupil based funding. And what that means is, we get a s- a per pupil amount, and then we also get a property tax amount. And what that means is, we're kind of fixed in our funding, uh, on our operational costs. Uh, with the key exception of a regional enhancement village. School districts can request an enhancement village, um, to put, to be put in front of the voters of the county. So it must be proposed on a countywide basis. And what that means is, each school district board, I'm all, I'm sorry, each school board, uh, will vote on it to whether they wanna put it for their, in front of their voters or not. And it has to have at least 50% of the student, uh, of the students of Wayne County. And what that means is, each school district votes on it. And if the school district representing the 50%, if their school districts represent 50% or more, it passes. And it's a countywide basis, so this is, everyone in the county gets this enhancement village, or it doesn't pass at all. It's collected, uh, by the ISD and then distributed to each school district. Each school district has complete control of the money, they get to dispend it how they want to. So, let's talk about the 2016, uh, proposal and what that means. On November 8th, in 2016, um, it was a two mil, uh, two mil enhancement village, uh, to be levied for six years, expiring in the school year of 2021 and '22. Uh, it generated approximately $360 per student. And what that means, if you're an average taxpayer, if you had a home value of a hundred dollars, uh, it would be about eight dollars, uh, uh, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, it would be about eight dollars per month, so less than Netflix. So why did we go for this enhancement village? Why did we get more funding for operational costs? Well, school districts in Wayne County have the goal of providing, uh, education that enables students to succeed. And what we're kind of seeing here in, in Michigan is kind of unprecedented. From 2011 to 2015, school operating funds from Wayne, from Wayne County districts dropped by $485 million. That's a lot of money, um, and it's based on the school funding statewide. Despite budgetary, uh, evasive maneuvers and strategical planning, a lot of schools are having a hard time funding for operational costs. Wayne County tried to solve this problem by passing the Enhancement Village. That's the backstory of it. So how can this money be used? Well, it's, like I said before, it's passed down from the ISD to the school district. Each school district has the capability to use that money how they see fit. You can use it for all operational costs, being teacher, to, to, uh, help with, uh, teacher-student ratios. You can do it to repair schools, you can have it to improve technology. You can even, uh, use it for salaries and benefits to, um, hire and retain teachers. But each school district has a str- uh, a separate strategy to use that, those funds. These are just a few facts, um... These are just a few facts, more or less, on Michigan funding, and a, and a few trends. Recent studies show that resources, uh, to educate at-risk, um, and English le- uh, language learners are low in Michigan. Another studies, study shows that when you adjust for inflation, Michigan's per pupil funding is actually down 7.5% since 2008. So I'm gonna read that again. So when you reflect inflation, Michigan schools are actually down in funding 7.5% since 2008. Because of this, um, districts with, uh, declining enrollment are having a very hard time funding schools and providing, uh, adequate programs for their students. A couple county, uh, Wayne County facts are to the right there. The percentage of students in poverty in Wayne County, um, is 43% versus 17% statewide. From 1999 to 2011, poverty in Wayne County is up from 21% to two, uh, to 38%. Uh, that trend has been growing since 2006. And last but not least, least, uh, English language learners, uh, students have increased from in 2010, it was about 20,000 students, now, uh, in 2015, it was up to 30,000. So all trends, uh, throughout Wayne County. So, the next question is, do we renew the village, uh, when it expires in 21, 22? And what this kind of means for us? Uh, and this is kind of where my background will kind of help out. Uh, the district will lose $360 per student, uh, if we do not renew the Enhancement Village. There's been a lot of studies, uh, on school funding in Michigan, the latest one was probably through MS, MSU. But what they're seeing is, Michigan has been ranked last, the last 20 years in school funding. And, uh, it's kind of a, a trend in this state. And there hasn't been sufficient change, uh, from the legislature to change that. So, school districts and counties are seeking other options. Like we said, we would have to be, this would have to be voted on in 2020. So this is being presented to you this month, you would have to vote on it, uh, February 9th. Uh, if we don't vote on it this year, we will have to wait till 2022. And last, this is now affecting charter schools. So really, all school, all students in Wayne County are gonna see this benefit. And specifically what that means for us at Wayne Westland, um, that's just over $4 million for our operational costs, uh, that we use to pay teachers, buy equipment and technology. And so it's, it's, it's big. So, if you'd like any more additional information, you can go to Wayne Risa, uh, Wayne Risa's website. They have a, uh, a bunch of information and tools for the upcoming Enhancement Village for you.
Should we move to the board?
Got a question? Okay, so this, um, is renewed, uh, November 2020, correct? Now, don't we have a sinking fund as well? Like, what other things that we have come on the ballot at the same time?
I would have to find the exact date of that, but, um, yeah, we do have a sinking fund also for our district. This would be more of a countywide endeavor.
Yeah, 'cause what I'm concerned about is like the campaigning, 'cause we just, you know, got the bond passed. And with the bad publicity with the community, it's gonna be hard to get them to trust us, you know, for new initiatives. That's what I'm really worried about. And I am able to get some groups, like when we did the bond to help us, like they actually knocked on the door, they didn't charge us anything. And, you know, to mobilize for the campaign, if, if we need help for this renewal for the village. But we just have to figure out as a district how to strategize to do a campaign to give us a positive image to the community. 'Cause we don't want them feeling like, hey, we just passed this bond and we spent a lot of money, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, the, uh, the big difference with an enhancement village, um, with a bond and a sinking fund, you're very restricted in how you use that money. Uh, Enhancement Village, um, as I kind of pointed out, it's there to help operational costs.
But it's just the community, that's the problem, because I know like the city, they have a lot of taxes, like coming on this ballot and everything. So as a district, we have to figure out a way how we're gonna be able to get this passed. 'Cause what's gonna happen, they're gonna say, no, we gave you all this money, we got all these taxes, you know what I'm saying? So, I definitely understand how it works, but we have to figure out a s- s- strategy or a campaign for the community. Like, kind of really sit down and figure out how we're gonna get this passed. 'Cause, you know, we really need this money and we're having declining enrollment, we can't afford to lose another $4 million.
And if I can add, Ms. Heinz, this is also a countywide vote, not just the community. So it's, it's all of the, the stakeholders throughout Wayne County, um, that we, that Wayne Risa will work to, to get the word out to the communities, just like we did during 2016.
Further comments, Mrs. Heinz?
May I?
Just, just a point of clarification, this, this district has many different funding sources. And what we're talking about now is, as Mrs. Simmons stated, we're talking about a countywide enhancement village. And that's, that's the only thing we're discussing tonight. And this is, renews, uh, the issue's gonna be on next month's, uh, Board Agenda. That's why we're receiving this, uh, presentation. Mr. Buckeloo?
Yeah, if, if my understanding is correct, 50% of the students in Wayne County have to be represented by a vote of school boards to go forward. In other words, um, if this district were to vote in favor of putting the village on the ballot, it would be proportionate to the number of students in this district. Another district with more students or fewer students would have a greater say, a larger vote, or a lesser vote, depending on their student population.
That's right.
Now, if we don't do anything, we still have this village through 2021, don't we?
Yes.
But we need to get on the ball now, because if we don't vote, if we don't put this village proposal on the ballot in 2020, state law requires that we re- that we wait until 2022. And that was your point earlier, that we would lose $360 a student, uh, during that period between putting it on the ballot in this current year, or putting it on the ballot two years down the road.
That's correct.
Okay. And as terms of us putting a strategy together, this is something that's going to be, um, shepherded through by the, uh, by Risa. Uh, Dr. Randy Leopold, uh, did that for us, uh, four years ago, and he's prepared to move forward with this again. So the timing really, uh, is, is the best it could be, whether it's good or not, it's the best it can be. Again, uh... I would hope that our, our board votes to put this on the ballot and that other school districts with student populations as large, larger and smaller than ours, vote the same way so that we can get this in front of the voters. $4 million a year and a hundred and eight million dollar budget might not seem like a whole lot of money. But, uh, but we know from the... But, uh, but we know from the last few years of having this enhancement village, it's the difference between meeting our obligations and struggling to, uh, make cuts so that we can stay within our budget. I, I would hope that everyone gives this strong thought and that they come back next month in favor of this proposition.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Uh, Mrs. Madell?
Uh, did I miss this? When are they proposing to put this on the ballot?
So...
On November's, this, this year, November's ballot?
Yes, but I believe the window is from February to July?
February to June, the boards can vote.
So the sooner it goes to the board, the better?
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about if this does pass in the county and it makes it on the ballot, they're looking to put it on the ballot for this November, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, now, when does our sinking fund expire?
I would have to find that for you.
Okay, so it's not gonna be this November?
Don't believe so.
Okay, and that's what, I think that's what Mrs. uh, Heinz's concern was, is that we would probably be putting one on the ballot, the county's putting one on the ballot, and now the voters have a hopson's choice here, because nobody likes to see their taxes go up. But which one do I vote for? Local school district or Wayne County? So I, I can see where her concern was, but if we don't have to deal with it this November on this ballot, then it's kind of a mood issue right now.
Yes, and I can get additional sinking fund information for you after.
Okay, for sure.
Mr. Neal, thank you, Mrs. Madell.
I think one of the things that we have enjoyed is strong community support for our schools. And, uh, when they see the number, the actual number, it was really important to see the average, if they have a hundred thousand dollar home, that it means eight dollars. I think when people see that number, it means something, and I think it's, it's something that they can say to themselves, you know, for eight dollars, or if I have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, twelve dollars, I can help make sure that my school system stays strong. I think that's how we win the day on this issue.
Other comments from the board?
Just, Miss Buckaloo? We are talking about a renewal, not an additional, uh, not an increase.
Yep, this would be a renewal.
That would be the same, that would likely be the same, uh, where a sinking fund village is, is concerned. It would likely be the same.
Thank you. Uh, and just to clarify, whether or not there are other funding issues up, what we're deciding now is whether we are going to support a countywide effort. And as Mr. Buckaloo pointed out, we have a vote in the matter commensurate with our size relative to the group. So our vote is an important vote. We're a very large school district. But the issue doesn't live or die on our vote. It lives or dies based upon what the county is going to do. And we certainly want to support this. Uh, when it, when it first passed, uh, it was supported overwhelmingly countywide under Dr. Leoplin's, uh, leadership, and it would cause a, uh, it would cause financial difficulties in the school district, but not just this school district, school districts throughout the county if it didn't pass. And as Mr. Buckaloo pointed out, i- it is not an increase. We're, we're merely discussing whether or not we're going to support a renewal of an existing, uh, millage, of an existing tax. So, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Kling. Appreciate that. This, uh, this portion of the agenda deals with, uh, I think this is citizens' comments. Uh, four nine three point two zero, citizens' comments on agenda items. Citizens would like to comment on i- any item that appears on this evening's agenda or invited to fill out a blue form and come up and talk with us right now. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Okay, saying none, we'll, uh, move on to the consent agenda. Four nine four point two zero is our motion. Mrs. Walker?
Support.
Support by Ms. Heinz. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Neal.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes. Four nine five point two zero on our agenda are representative designations. Uh, the two, the twenty twenty, uh, WCASB representative. Uh, would the twenty nineteen representative like to continue serving in that capacity?
Oh, sure, why not?
Okay, overwhelmingly, Mrs. Madell is thrilled with the idea. Let the record reflect, Mrs. Madell will continue to serve. And representative to the Michigan Association of School Boards on behalf of the district, Mrs. Walker? Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Board appreciates that. Let the record reflect, Mrs. Walker will continue to serve at the Michigan Association of School Boards representative. Uh, four nine six point two zero, designations of the official newspapers of the city. Newspapers are The Observer, an eccentric newspaper, The Telegram, The Journal Newspaper, and The Wayne Dispatch. Ms. Simmons?
Just read everything I was going to read, to read, so it's, you did.
All right, then I'll call for a motion.
Support.
Support by Mrs. Walker? I mean, uh, motion by Mrs. Walker, support by?
Support.
Mr. Buckaloo? Roll call vote, please. Mr. Neal?
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yay, and President Cox?
Yes, so we have five yeses and two yays. Uh, next item on the agenda, four nine seven point two zero is, uh, legal firm representation. Mrs. Simmons, I'll let you do this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district has had an ongoing relationship with the legal firms listed in this evening's agenda for several years. We've been working with Clark Hill since two thousand three, and they serve as general counsel, workman's compensation, bonds, elections, financial contracts, student discipline and expulsion, environmental and specialty matters. We have been working with Lusk Albertson since approximately nineteen ninety, and they handle our general counsel, labor, special education matters, student discipline and expulsion, special matters and board policy. Trune Law Firm since nineteen ninety-seven, and they handle elections and labor negotiations. Kelly Cawthorn since nineteen ninety-nine, they handle governmental and legislative affairs. And Miller Canfield since two thousand sixteen, and their work includes, uh, finance, bonds and miscellaneous.
Move for approval, but Mrs. Madell?
Support.
That was me.
Mrs. Walker, support by Ms. Heinz? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Mr. Neal, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes.
Seventy-eight.
Uh, four nine eight point two zero is the Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Madell?
Uh, interplace today is the monthly report for December. So.
Move to accept Mrs. Madell's report from the Head Start Monthly Report.
Moved by Mrs. Walker, support.
I'll support.
Support by Dr. Weaver. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Neal?
Uh, Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
And Mr. President Cox?
Uh, yes.
Seventy-eight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is four nine nine point two zero is the superintendent's reports and comments from Mrs. Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are excited to be back from the winter break and share more great things happening in the district in two thousand twenty. This spring, we will begin our bond construction at Wayne Memorial High School and the William G. Ford Career Tax Center. We are continuing with the middle school transition community meetings and are currently meeting with our fifth grade students and parents. I want to wish good luck to our middle and high school students as they will take their final exams this week. Friday is the last day of our first semester. We are halfway through the school year already. The district will be closed on Monday, January twentieth, and observance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Some of our students and staff will participate in a program celebrating Dr. King with the City of Westland. Please visit the city's website if you would like more information on this event. Our district spelling bee will begin at eight AM on February sixth at Adams Upper Elementary School for the top spellers in fifth through eighth grade. The winner will advance to the state spelling bee in Detroit. We are very excited to announce that we will welcome the class of two thousand thirty-three at kindergarten roundup on March twelfth. If you know a student who will be attending kindergarten next year, please invite them to attend a kindergarten roundup at one of our elementary schools. We have more information on our district website, and parents can also call their local elementary school or our office for more information.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons. Next item on the agenda is the review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. Heinz?
Sorry, um, Mr. Cox, are we not doing citizen comments in this?
Did I blast right past it?
We didn't, it's not there.
It's not on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Appreciate that, Mrs. Walker. We are doing citizens' comments. Yes. I just want, again, it's no time to get run out of town. Uh, any citizens wishing to address the, the board on any iss- on any item at all, welcome to do so now. Anyone? Thank you. And thank you again, Mrs. Walker.
You're welcome.
Uh, good catch. Review and recommendations, members of the Board of Education. Ms. Heinz?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the people who got their positions. Um, we're gonna have a great year this year. Um, I'm excited. Uh, I will be participating in the Martin Luther King Walk at City Hall. I think it starts at nine. And the nights, they usually have a bus that takes us back and forth, so we pray that the weather's gonna be nice this year, 'cause the last few years it's been pretty cold. And, um, we were able to attend the youth mentoring program. They had a really nice, uh, program at the Henry Ford Museum. Uh, they have a, a program where they work with, uh, young adults, uh, mostly in high school, and they, um, have mentors and they have like jobs at the museum, and then they do like a lot of credit recovery. So, um, it's, I like it, 'cause it kind of reminds me of the Champions Program, how they have these people who like really help them in life and really help them reach their goals. So one thing I do love about Wayne Westland, they do a lot with partnerships in the community, even with the local churches, um, local organizations. I know, um, the church I go to, um, New Hope Baptist Church, they adopted David Hicks. So they have like mentors that come into the schools, and that is just so important for kids to have somebody, 'cause like they were talking about with the village, there's like a lot of, Wayne Westland, we're like, I think, third in the counting with the highest homeless rate. There's a lot of poverty. So if we have the community give back to our children and show, hey, you know, even though you're going through these circumstances, there's ways you can, you know, do better in life, those are good. So I do definitely appreciate it. You've been doing a wonderful job, Ms. Simmons. I really appreciate all your hard efforts in helping us get through this year. And I'm just excited, and it's gonna be great, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Mrs. Madell?
Well, welcome back. I'm glad everybody made it back safely, uh, from vacation. Uh, I want to thank all the people that are listed in our, excuse me, our agenda book today, uh, for all the donations that they have made to our Family Resource Center. Uh, our Family Resource Center does not, um, receive a whole lot of money from, uh, you know, like a big corporation or anything. So they do run themselves on contributions and donations from the community, and it would appear that there are a lot of people who've gotten the word that there is a need over there for all kinds of, uh, activities and money and, um, supplies. So I want to thank all of those people, uh, for contributing. And again, congratulation to everybody on their positions, and we made it through last year. Let's see how we do this next coming year.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Mrs. Walker?
Thank you. Um, congratulations to each and every one of you on your positions. Uh, Mrs. Simmons, thank you for acknowledging us for, um, board appreciation, and the rest of the staff, thank you. I know it's not always easy, but we appreciate you. And, um, definitely tell Chef Tony he outdid itself, as always. Um, that'll be it.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, and I'm gonna tag along with Mrs. Walker, if I might. Thank you, Mrs. Simmons, for your help and your leadership in this past, uh, few months. And thanks too to Chef Tony for the, for the wonderful go-bag. We'll enjoy that, at least my wife will. I'm, I'm off of that stuff for a while. Thank you, Mr. Hallman, for bringing in, uh, Brady in Brooklyn and getting us off to a fine start. It's always good to have someone lead us in the pledge, uh, and do it so deliberately as, as tonight. Uh, Mr. Kling, thank you very much for taking us through the enhancement village renewal proposal. Uh, this is an important thing, and, and we need to understand that, uh, that proposal in depth before we, we vote, uh, next month. And again, good luck to all of us as we start a new calendar year and, and tackle the business of the board, uh, moving forward. We have a lot of decisions to make in the next few months, and, uh, I know that we've been working together closely, uh, on those issues in the last couple of months, and that, uh, I, I'm sure that we'll continue to do so moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, congratulations to the board officers. Also, I'd like to, uh, say congratulations to Dr. Townsend. I understand that, uh, you're gonna be the head honcho in Benton Harbor. And, uh, I think that's great, and I think you will serve them well. Uh, also, I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Kling for the book, the Christmas book that was given to us. It's a fantastic read. And thank you for your presentation tonight. I thought you did a fine job. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mr. Neal?
Yes, well, I want to thank my fellow board members for, uh, allowing me to stay as secretary, and I congratulate, uh, the board members who were elected to positions, and thank all the board for what they've done. Uh, Mrs. Simmons and staff, thank you so much for the recognition, uh, that you've given us and, and making sure that we got a Chef Tony package. I really love Chef Tony's stuff. I mean, it's like artwork. I see his name is on the wrapper, I think. It says Tony something or another candy bar there, but I'm looking forward to it. And, uh, Mr. Kling, uh, the book, as mentioned, that you gave, I actually read it from cover to cover. I thank you very much. I took it with me on vacation, and I read it on the plane. I read it where I was at, and, uh, I appreciate the thought. And Dr. Townsend, I will miss you. Uh, I very much appreciate what you've done for our schools, and, uh, I wish you all the best where you're going. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members in thanking our interim superintendent, Jill Simmons. You have done a remarkable job, a magnificent job. We're so fortunate to have you here, and congratulations. Uh, you know, nobody knows when they get thrust into that position, uh, but you've just done a wonderful job. I don't think anybody in this district could have asked more of you. And, uh, and I appreciate it, certainly. I'd like to say, Dr. Townsend, you are a fine and distinguished gentleman, sir, and I'm gonna miss you. And, uh, I, I guess I knew this was going to happen, because this school district is all about helping people go to the next level in their lives. And you're doing it, and we're, we're all proud of you, and we all wish you the best, and you can always come back here anytime and, uh, and see us. We'd love to have you. Uh, I appreciate the fact that the Board of Education, throughout the course of all of the many meetings that we've had to have in order to deal with the events of the last seven or eight months, nobody has complained one time about all of the meetings and, and all of the conversation. They've just been right there. Uh, it, really, it's remarkable, because trying to put seven people together all the time is, in and of itself, a difficult challenge. But it's, it was easy every time. Everybody was just more than willing, willing to do it, and I was, I was surprised, and, uh, regardless of how you saw the vote go on officers tonight, everybody's together when we get in that room. When it comes to the kids in this school district, we just work together, and it's, it's, uh, it's wonderful to see, and I'm sure we will have a fantastic, uh, year about it, and I know that we've got a lot to accomplish, and I know that this group can do it. I, I congratulate all of the, uh, all of the officers and, uh, look forward to working with you in the coming year. And, Mr. Kling, thank you for your book. I was glad to hear that you had given that book on Crucial Conversations to Everybody. I thought you were just giving it to me, and maybe you saw something I needed to work on, so I appreciate that. So with that, thank you once again. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to say that we have a distinguished gentleman in the audience tonight, former mayor of the City of Westland, former council president for the City of Westland, former, um, uh, UNISERV director for the Michigan Education Association, and our own board member, Mr. Trav Griffin. Thank you for being here tonight, Trav. Nice to see you. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move!
By Ms. Heinz. In support?
Yeah.
Support.
Mr. Buckaloo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you.